We'll call this Joint Planning Commission, City Council Workshop to Order. I don't know that we have to have a determination of forum. The first item on the list is Clarius Partners Northwest Broad Street Rezoning. And the first person is who's handling this one? All right, Ben.
Thank you Chair Halliburton. So, thank you everyone for coming. This is our second meeting of this joint conceptual workshop. First item is the Clarius Partners Proposal on Northwest Broad. It's the court property right here in the center, time like that. And this is the property that previously we saw coming through with the developer Ardevon, coming through with a housing, commercial, and office-type development. That's no longer moving forward. We have Clarius Partners who are proposing to develop a master-planned industrial park for this piece of property. And they're looking at light industrial, or light assembly, manufacturing, distribution operations. In early discussions between staff and Clarius, we discourage cross-dock, especially in this area with the limited access to Broad. This type of development is expected to fill a need for the city with this type of product. And there is an economic employment opportunity with this type of development. Reason we're bringing it tonight is that future land use map is being reconsidered in this area with the Cherry Lane Corridor Study. The area is currently zoned CH. And the future land use is currently employment generating. The concepts that we've looked at with Cherry Lane Corridor Study most recently, and I think was presented to council in an update, was a general industrial designation for this area. So, with all that, we have Craig Daniger here with Clarius Partners, Matt Taylor as well from SEC. So, they'll do a short presentation, and then we'll do the 10 minutes for questions after their presentation.
Great. Thank you, appreciate it. Nice to see everyone, thank you for having us tonight. Again, my name is Craig Daniger, Principal with Clarius Partners. Matt Taylor with SEC is here to present our anticipated development here this afternoon. I know we're short on time, so my plan was just to give a brief overview of Clarius and who we are. And then Matt will provide a brief overview of the concept plan that we're proposing here tonight. So, Clarius Partners is a full-service real estate development shop in select markets across the country. We focus on ground-up developments and business park settings. And our parks primarily are focused on providing facilities for light manufacturing and assembly and commerce. And in our 15-year history, we've executed on over $2 billion worth of vertical developments. And our focus exclusively is on best-in-class, Class A facilities of that nature that tend to attract the best-in-class, credit-worthy tenants as well that are good community members that provide the best quality jobs to communities as well. We could start going through some of these slides here. I'm just going to show a few pictures and representative projects of ours. So, these photos here are our actual Clarius buildings to give you an idea of the fit and feel of these facilities. Handsome corner entry features, and again, just Class A facilities of this nature. The next few slides are just a few sample developments of ours that are similar in terms of the size and scale of what we're proposing here today. So, I'm just going to quickly breeze through these. But the first one here is Clarius Park Hardyville, just outside of Savannah in South Carolina. We just finished the first phase of this development. TS Conductor is the anchor tenant there. They're setting up shop right now. They are a manufacturer of advanced power conductor cabling. So, excited to have them in that facility there. Next one is in Goodyear, Arizona, Lakin Park. This one here I wanted to include because as you can see from that plan, there's a lot of infrastructure that's, you know, community-wide infrastructure going through that park. And that is similar to what we're anticipating and providing for here and coordinating with the overall Cherry Lane infrastructure initiatives here in Murfreesboro as well. And then the last one I'll show here is just outside of Charleston in Somerville, South Carolina. Thorn Health Tech is the anchor tenant there. We did two build-to-suits for them in this park. They're a nutraceutical manufacturers of vitamins and supplements. They put their headquarters and production facility in this park. The next slide here just lists out some details on economic benefits that these developments typically provide. There's a lot of information in here, but just to hit a few key bullet points here at a high level. First and foremost is jobs. These types of developments equal jobs. So, we're targeting a median of, an estimated amount of 650 to 700 jobs for the scale of the development that we're talking about today. And then the second is related to property taxes. So, one rule of thumb for this type of development is that for each $1 of property tax revenue generated, there's only 60 cents worth of cost associated with providing services to these properties. And so, that creates a bit of a windfall to be used by the city for schools or whatever you see fit, really. Then last, from an infrastructure standpoint, really in this case quite directly, our plan that Matt will walk us through accommodates infrastructure through these parcels to unlock access to adjacent parcels, allowing those properties to also be placed into service, providing a benefit for the community at large by nature of that as well.
Got eight minutes, man.
Eight?
Yeah.
I can keep her short.
Hey Craig, can you move the microphone?
Sure.
Yeah.
If you're good.
No, we need to pick it up for the minutes.
Yeah. Is that good?
No, that's not good.
So, I think that we're all probably familiar with the site because it was the old Legacy Sports Site that you saw. I don't think Ardevon ever made a formal application to the city, so you may not be familiar with that term, but the Legacy Sports Site. And so, if you will go to the next one, Matthew. We think that this aligns with the existing land use plan, which calls for employment generating, as well as your current version of the small area study.
Good, great.
And so, this is your current version of the small area study. And so, you'll see in a minute in our plan, we keep generally the same access points. We keep this connectivity that goes back to Cherry Lane, keep that open to cross the river in the future. And we have our, you know, we respect the access points back onto Broad Street. We think that y'all's land use plan is on point. We think it aligns with the uses that we already see along Broad Street. And so, whether that's an international paper or some of the, you know, the old GE, some of those type uses that are along Broad Street on this corridor were those same type uses except for modern and more elevated in design. And so, and I think that Craig's examples of those tenants that have anchored their other locations are good examples of those. If you will, Matthew. So, here's a blow-up version of our master plan. And so, under this, we show two access points on the Broad Street. One of those, we anticipate would have a signal. That would be the one closest to town side under this scenario. And then the other one would act as more of a, just a free-flow access point. That aligns with where the current access is across the street. Both of those are existing median openings, which I know will be important to TDOT. We've actually already engaged our traffic consultant, Kim Lee Horn, who was the traffic consultant for Legacy Sports, as well as the Ardevon Project. And they've also done all the work along Broad Street for TDOT on their smart corridors. And so, we brought Kim Lee Horn on as a partner, very familiar with the corridor, very familiar with the interchange and this piece of property. A couple of key points with this is the road that is coming in at the signal that you'll see outlined in white here, yes, that is anticipated to be a public road. And then the road that goes back toward the top of the screen in white, that would also be a public road. And so, that marries up with what the city's small area plan shows in this location. And so, those would be built by us, dedicated to the city, so you could access them in the future and continue to expand. The lighter blue areas here are all stormwater detention-type areas. You'll notice we've got a large buffer on the backside where we back up to the Stones River. Some of that is water quality buffer, and some of that's just us planting additional buffer up against Oakley, our neighbors to the north. If you will go to the next one, Matthew. And then this starts to give an overall perspective of our distances from our buildings and our activity to the surrounding neighborhoods. And so, from our nearest building back to Oakley to the north is about 1,700 feet. So, you know, you're approaching, you're really three and a half football fields there. We purposefully located our stormwater on that end to create extra separation in addition to the stream buffer. We've also very purposefully located or angled our buildings so that the ends are facing those instead of truck docks. And then on the west side or town side, you're approaching about 1,700 feet between our buildings and the nearest neighbors. The only, again, that design there is mainly for the end of buildings to face that. And we've got a farm that will remain undeveloped right now, that's not part of our project, that's between here and there. And, yes, right there. And that is also denoted as industrial on your small area plan, employment generating in the future land use map. The only building that does not face the end toward the neighbors is Building F. And that is the part that really, most of that building faces up against the sewer treatment plant there. And so, we feel like we have provided adequate distance, and our design is sensitive to the uses around us with this. So, does standard maintenance?
Thank you. You did great.
And we'll be happy to answer any questions that y'all might have, comments otherwise.
Counsel or commission, any questions for the applicant?
Yeah. Ben brought up something about cross-dock operation.
Mm-hmm.
So, can you explain that? Or Ben, tell us what you meant about cross-dock operations.
Cross-docking is generally, is meant by trucks parking on two different sides of the buildings, and then they're swapping up cargo very quickly and then sort of heading out. So, there's a whole lot of truck traffic there. And we just know that this is a sensitive area with that limited access to Broad and the amount of traffic that is on Broad.
And so, to address that, Building G is the only one that has docks on both sides. The rest of these are all single-loaded buildings. And so, and one good thing about this site and this layout is it, I don't think any building is identical to the other. So, we have a wide reach of tenants with this particular layout to address those concerns. The tenants that Clarius have been attracting, they're not your typical cross-dock access. They need a little bit of warehousing at times. Other times, they just need good access back to streets and high ceilings, things like that.
Thank you. This question's more for staff. I brought it up to the developer already. It doesn't really affect this property, but the property to the next property over. To avoid having to go from industrial through Riverbend, can we avoid making that connection between Riverbend and the sewage treatment plant?
No, I think a lot of the conversations about that connection that I've been a part of have really been around emergency access and that type of access. So, I know that that's an ongoing conversation. But I know it was proposed for some sort of emergency-type access.
Time's going to have a crash gate.
Yeah.
I thought you were going to build it with a crash gate, expecting a crash gate, not a thorough physical. So, I don't have a problem.
Yeah, I just don't want, I just don't want industrial traffic driving up against Riverbend, against Thompson Lane.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can work with the city on that anyway. You can all see fit. We don't intend to utilize it, to your point, in any way whatsoever. So, we've noticed that on the Cherry Lane red lines in the overall study, which is why we commented that in this version.
Any other questions?
There's no zoning issues with what we, we're not, did you say with another zoning change?
So, this would, I'll let you speak to that.
Yes, sir, we would. And that's while we're before y'all, because we would anticipate in the next couple of months to make an application through, it come through as a planned industrial development. And so, instead of a PRD, it's planned industrial. I think we've only got one more of those in town, but it would give you all that extra control. And, you know, the commitments that we're showing here would be commitments we'd have to go with.
It's on commercial highway right now, which would not permit what they're proposing?
Yeah, I think a few years ago, it actually, Commercial Highway would have, but I think, didn't y'all change that whenever FedEx was looking out on Russell Boulevard or somewhere through there?
I think that was just for warehousing, for actual manufacturing uses. It would not have permitted it.
Yeah, that's true.
Any other questions? This being my first time, we're not taking any motions or actions on this. So, I guess we'll move on to the next applicant, correct?
Okay. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it, appreciate it.
All right. The next item is David Criswell, host of Steel Engineering, regarding Monroe Street Apartments Rezoning. Ben, are you doing this one or no? Matthew? Okay.
Thanks for having us.
All right, so.
Hey, can you ask?
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
If you are here, if you're here for this development, then you don't have to stay, right? We're fine for people getting up and in. Okay, just want to make sure. You're welcome to stay for the whole thing, but maybe boys.
All right, well, good afternoon, planning commissioners and mayor and council. The second item is for the property that's located at the northwest corner of Monroe Street and East Castle Street. It's currently zoned RD residential duplex, and there is an existing duplex. So, these four lots right here are all zoned RD, and they have existing duplexes. Mr. Criswell owns this property and this property. And he is proposing a five-unit multifamily building on the southern portion of these two properties. So, it would be the entire corner lot and then a portion of the northern property. So, he's proposing to resubdivide. And the five-unit apartment building would not be permitted by the RD zone. So, we thought this was a good opportunity to bring it before the joint conceptual workshop for feedback on what he's proposing, primarily because the future land use map, just on this side of Bilbro, transitions to suburban residential, which is the, which is the more single-family based. And that was intentional as we get over into the more established, single-family neighborhoods of First Avenue and Second Avenue, to keep the, what we would call mixed-form housing, which would be duplexes, quadplexes, triplexes, smaller multifamily residential uses to the west of this established neighborhood. And so, as you can see, this is right on the border between the mixed-form housing and the suburban residential. And so, we wanted to bring this before you today as a potential opportunity to use the transition policy in the comprehensive plan where adjacent land uses on the future land use map could potentially bleed over from their existing boundary onto the adjacent parcels. And so, that mixed-form housing would generally be associated with what Mr. Criswell wants to do on the property. However, it is not consistent with the suburban residential character, which is single-family in nature, typically what you would see in RS, RS 8, 10, 12, or 15. So, Mr. Criswell has a presentation on that. I'll be happy to answer any questions. He'll show you the proposed plan. I guess I'll show that to you right now as well. So, you can see here, he has the existing duplex that he owns to the north that would remain, and then a five-unit multifamily development on the corner. And this is something similar to what he would want to do. And so, David, since your PowerPoint has a number of pages too, I'm going to go ahead and just bring this over to you, okay?
Okay, that's great. Thank you guys so much for having me here, or guys and gals. I'm nervous, I don't do this a lot. I'm not polished. I have not made a PowerPoint presentation in like 25 years prior to making this, so I apologize. I also apologize for my voice, I'm coming off a little Thanksgiving illness. And I apologize for how fast I'm going to run through this because, yeah. I want to build affordable housing. Reasons to approve a project like this are, we need affordable housing. It has to be like this. It has to be in an area like this. There are already lots of properties like this around downtown area. And if we can't do this here, then where can we do this? This is the subject property currently. Is there, this is how little I know. How do you maximize? Click right there? There we go. 324 and 326 Monroe Street is a duplex built in the 50s. Certainly nothing special about it today. This is the subject property, you already covered that, so I'm going to skip right over this. I've been told that by right, I can build three units, each of which would be about 3,000 square feet, or could be up to, you know, 3,000 square feet. These could be three to four bedrooms, two stories, and have four to five occupants in each one of them. I'm asking to build less than that. I'm only asking to build about 3,500 square feet total. As you saw a minute ago, here's a very early rendering, all brick, one level, which is good for the handicap, the elderly. So many small and affordable rentals, you think like townhomes, those are always two-story, which limits a lot of the people who could live in them. Architectural shingles, covered front entries. I'm not trying to build cheap. I'm not asking for vinyl siding or anything like that. It's going to be nice. Let's take a look at the surrounding properties. These are those three duplexes. Each one of these lots touches my lot. They're all nice, they've all been rehabbed. None of them are going anywhere anytime soon. What is the rest of the neighborhood like? Well, it's a lot of small houses on small lots with no garages, probably an average home size of under 1,000 square feet. I didn't go through and calculate them, but as you can see from these pictures, they're all pretty small. The new resubdivided lot would be about 75 feet wide, deep by 143 feet wide, and the building would occupy the purple or blue area on that right picture. Again, this is just a rough site plan. We're still working with parking and green space, obviously. And then the existing duplex on the north side would remain. Distance between the homes, I'm not going to cover all these, but basically, we're within the same side setbacks as all the other properties on the street currently. Here's some pictures of properties similar to what I want to build around downtown. These are both properties that I own. 914 East Lidle Street is five units. 102 West Chestnut Street is three units. They're both nice, you know, like I said, workforce housing. How many units in the last five years have we built in Murfreesboro that are priced below the $2,000 a month average rental price in Murfreesboro? This is a screenshot from Zillow that I took on October 12th, back when I first made this. Average rent is $2,000. I can rent these places for $1,000 a month for a one-bedroom and 1,500 for a two-bedroom, and it'd be considerably cheaper. This is a property in the area. Brian Burns built and developed this, and it's about a block away from mine. I love it, I'm so glad that it's there. It replaced very substandard housing. And these units rent for 2,400 a month or 1,750 a month, which is just not accessible for a lot of people. I'm going to just skip right over this, but if anybody would like, I can email you this document. It's just building square footage to lot square footage, and so, it just shows that what I'm proposing is within the, you know, similar properties that already exist in downtown are within the same percentages. Why this and why here? This lot is already surrounded on all sides by multifamily structures, structures that are probably not going away anytime soon. Despite being multifamily, it would be the nicest structure on the street, and that's with most of the houses on the street already having been rehabbed. It will be affordable, I can rent these out for less than the average rent, substantially less than the average rent in Murfreesboro. They're small, tight, efficient, single-story, good for the elderly, handicap, those on a fixed income. The number-one phone call that I get from people who need a place to live is, hey, I just need somewhere nice where I can put my stuff, you know, or not nice, but doesn't have to be fancy, just something basic. The amenities provided by apartments are great, but some people don't want that, they don't want to pay for it. They just want something basic, and that's what this would be. And lastly, this is an area that's always going to be small, efficient starter homes. It's not, you know, this area south of Main Street is not having a lot of infill compared to like some of the other parts of downtown. I'm asking to build a multifamily building in an area already zoned for multifamily and surrounded by multifamily. I'm not asking for any sort of variance on setbacks. The only exemptions from this would be no garages, and instead of three larger units, I want to build five smaller units. Do we agree that affordable housing is needed? If it is, and this project doesn't work here, well, where does it work? And other cities in the US are giving grants for building affordable housing. I'm not asking for any money, I'm just asking for permission. Questions, objections? Thank you. Sorry.
Did you determine your rent based on the zip code?
No, I, so I just searched like Murfreesboro average rent, and that Zillow page was the first thing that came up. I didn't differentiate between 128 or 130 or anything like that. I live here, most of the properties that are those two-bedroom, one-bath type units are going to be in that 37130. You know, we're not getting a lot of those on the north side or on the west side of town. Those are all bigger, more expensive, newer, that sort of thing.
So, with both of you have is two bedrooms, or do you have some three bedrooms?
All we've got in there is two bedrooms. What we've got to propose right now is three two-bedrooms and two one-bedroom units.
And what are you renting your two bedrooms for?
About 1,500 would be the goal.
And the square footage?
Probably 750 square feet, give or take. You know, these units are two 12-by-12 bedrooms, a 12-by-12 living room, a 12-by-12 kitchen, a laundry room and a bathroom. And you can fit all that in 750 square feet pretty efficiently, as long as you don't have any hallways or anything like that. But I've got, the buildings that I posted way back up here, both of those are like that. And, you know, I've got a lot of happy tenants who are very content with renting a place like that. Oh, where'd it go? Here we go, those two right there. I would say each of the two-bedroom units in those are probably around 700 to 800 square feet.
You're very familiar with that area because it's right across the street from my church.
So, the number of parking spaces is 10?
So, right now, we've got 10 on here. That's something that we're still working with. I actually was kind of shooting for one per bedroom, but right now, we've got six on this side and four on this side. So, and that's for eight bedrooms.
And Mr. Halliburton, I would say that his proposed layout is very preliminary at this point. I think, I think if this was something that there was no objection to, we would work with the applicant on the design. But this is still very much in flux. The main issue here is that it would require rezoning and whether or not the use would be, whether or not there was any objections to move it forward with the rezoning for the multifamily use instead of the current RD duplex.
And this, this doesn't have to go before historic?
No, 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 it's well out of the, south of Main Street, two blocks off of like First and Second Avenue. So, just when we're talking about parking, as I said, there's eight bedrooms in there. We've got 10 spaces currently. I would actually like to lower that. Usually, you only end up with about five cars, like my, the five-unit picture that I had up there, there's only about five or six cars there every night. Also, this street, it's only one block long, there's very little traffic on it, and so, almost every other house has people parking on the street already. So, there's definitely some room for street parking there. But again, that's a bridge we can cross way on down the line.
So, your proposed project, you're looking at about how many units?
Five units. Three two-bedroom and two one-bedroom. And I'm, again, willing to negotiate on that or room sizes or whatever, but the lot, the new lot would only be about 150 feet wide and 75 feet deep, so start to run out of room, especially if you want to make them one level, which has kind of been the goal from the beginning.
What about the back? Is it a backyard or?
It, so, it is a very, you can see here, that there's about, I think, 30 feet currently between them, and the property line is right in the middle. So, there's not going to be much of a backyard, maybe a little eight-by-10 concrete patio, but certainly, there's just not space. If we're having front-entry parking, there's just not going to be a lot of space in the back for anything more than just a small patio area.
And no additional structure for storage or anything, right?
So, one thing we had talked about was building, a lot of the townhomes in town have storage units on the back of them. We had talked about adding those. I'm not opposed to it. I'm actually kind of in favor of it because it gives people somewhere to keep all their stuff. We, that was not on the drawing, but again, that's a very early drawing, so. That also gives a little division between the units out back. If people are sitting on the, it's a great way to do it, so.
I think this is a good way to transition.
especially if the property is directly adjacent on the property behind them, can do the exact same thing. What happens in 10 years, they do the same thing, and then you've gotta duplex backing up to a can. So, I think it's a good transition.
I was gonna say the same thing. I think, you know, I, I look at this and think Maple Street, where we've really put a, like a delineation on Maple Street and say, "Hey, commercial could go on this side, but it can't go." And it's a street, not a property line. And like seeing that you've got a property line where you've got one use and another use where literally the houses back into each other. Yeah, that, I mean, if we're gonna make that change, then I would pick what the street's gonna be to do that and not the property line.
Yeah, street to street.
Yeah.
And this is strictly rental property, right?
Yes.
Just a thought, uh, David, you get a little more concerned? I'm very familiar with this. This is where I would rate.
Okay.
But, uh, uh, hang your hand in your trash, where you can push your trash. So, you might wanna give some, sorry.
Good, good question. Something we thought about. A couple of my properties have concrete slabs where everybody sets their trash can. When you start talking about five trash cans, you know, well, maybe it makes sense to have a dumpster. Again, we're so early in this. That's something we haven't really discussed yet. I'm open to all options and suggestions. And if that's a stickler with you, tell me what you want. We'll do it.
Would you like to have your trash can out of?
I definitely don't want them on the front, except for when they're being picked up. Um, I, I would not be opposed to a single dumpster spot. It would just be a question of where we fit that. But, um, you know, I, I think that would be fine. Uh, what would, is it, what would you prefer? What would you like to see?
I think, I think the, perhaps the, the hard part would, it might be difficult to service a dumpster on such a small piece of property. It may be that, that an enclosure for carts to keep them hidden might be the...
You're not looking for, for this body, you're not looking for, this is just more of like, "Hey, are you okay with the concept?"
Yes, it's, it's more, it's more the use than the design.
The details y'all can get into. It's still gotta go through planning commission. It'll have to go through city council. And then after that, it'll have to go through site plan, so.
Yeah, I think, I think we're, we're looking for guidance as to if there are any, any, what your feedback is, but there, are, are there any objections to, to him moving forward or, or with the use itself?
I don't have any, I don't wanna opinion. I don't have any problem with it.
I like the con- concept, and I think it's a very appropriate area to begin.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate it. Anything else? Thank you so much for having me. I appreciate it.
All right. Uh, next up is Brian Davis Klein, Swinney Architects, One East College BUD. Oh, man!
I'm gonna, I'm gonna yield most of my time to Bart here, but I just wanted to, uh, introduce the, the topic or the, the matter. And I know I published in the agenda the notes that, that, uh, I took when we met on November 12th. And this is, uh, One East College. I'll have the, you have the, you've got your present. I didn't do a presentation. I believe Bart, I think Bart was gonna have one.
Yeah, they have it.
But, um, so it's, 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 we'll call it One East College 2.0, if you wanna call it that. Um, we've talked about the fact that, um, in order for this project to work, uh, it is gonna have a structured parking deck. There are gonna be some multifamily component, a condominium component, and either a private or public venue component with the old, uh, the old church. So, there, and potentially three different financing components with each of those legs. So, uh, how those all enter into a parking structure agreement, and that's, that gets into some of the details. But, um, I wanted to go ahead and let them bring it to these bodies' attention. And again, go through the concept before there's any, uh, to give them feedback. Read the room, read the temperature of what they're proposing, and ask questions. And I'm gonna leave it at that and let Bart, uh, go through the project.
Hello, my name is Bart Klein with Klein-Swinney Associates. Um, architect, representing the developer, TRC, on the project. Many of you know One East College. It's been around. Um, it's still here. Uh, the developer's committed to developing this project now or later. Um, many of you know, when this was moving forward, at that time, we hit COVID and we hit an area of hardness, and it was unfinancable really at that time. And so I know the city and the development team have been talking about how to put the best foot forward to get it moving in the right direction and what can be done, uh, in this current market to give it the best opportunity, uh, moving forward. Um, for those that don't know, One East College is a mixed-use Class A development, um, that is not tested in this area. Uh, it's something you would see in the Gulch. So, comping to anything here does not exist. So, they are pioneering with this project. Uh, many of you have seen Broad Street, which has gone through its hurdles, which seems to be moving in the right direction. Uh, this is similar to that in terms of uses, but it's all one big structure, which makes it even more complex and more dense. So, if you're not familiar, this is located one block off the square at the old Methodist Church. So, the purpose is to give just a high level of, you know, the next, we got a long way to go before we're there, uh, because it is complex. Uh, but the development team and design team have looked at some things that can do that puts its best foot forward to make it easier to finance in our current market. So, what you see here is the previous site plan. And I'm gonna go through this. Bottom left-hand corner, the existing church. Um, stabilize the church, renovate the church, but keep its historic nature, so it can be a restaurant, high-level, high-end condos, office, to basically get a tenant to come in and take on the space. So, so that plan is still there. As we move into the bottom pink structure, so that was, uh, two floors of office space with three to six floors of residential on top apartments. As we go into the green, that is four floors of apartments. And as we move to the top left-hand pink, that was one floor of office and four floors of residential. I know it says condos, it's a, a mishap, but if you guys remember, the parking garage in the center, so this is called a RAP project. It's where the apartments and mixed-use and retail wrap a parking structure, so you hide the parking structure. At that time, we had 28 condos on top of the parking structure. Well, building a 10-story facility downtown was hard then, it's hard now. Uh, so one of the big moves was to actually take that off of that floor, which takes us from a construction-type of concrete to a wood-frame type, which makes it more economical on that, while still providing the same level of product. So, moving on, some of the big kind of changes, uh, that were talked about is at the top left-hand corner is increasing the office space. So this is a floor of retail on the lower level and one floor of office, and floor floors of condos above that. So that keeps it a stick-frame project. So at one time, it was 28 condos on top of the parking garage. That has increased to 40. And then also, we've kind of divided in a manner to where it can be financed as its own. So, those following the Broad Street project, and I'm gonna say similarities, which, you know, when you finance different portions of a project, you have one finance group that can finance apartments, but they're different than the group that finances hotels versus... So, keeping lessons learned, right? And so that's really why that move was made. Um, as we continue to go around the block, uh, the top right-hand color, the four floors of apartments, that stays as, as is. I can't see, it looks green from here in mine, but it's purple. And then I move down to pink. It's two floors of office space with four floors of apartments above. I know the city and development team are talking about possible, uh, city office space in those areas because there's a need for city office space. So that is kind of a step forward on trying to help this project move in the right direction from a financial standpoint. Um, that's really the primary change. There's no change in footprint. There's no change in, in the level of design other than taking that, uh, high-rise element out of it and getting to six-to-eight-story structures around. I'm gonna go through kind of every floor. So the second floor, again, the office on the left-hand corner. Um, there's a separation wall that would happen, provide access to the parking garage and then apartments. So, and then on the bottom is the optional office on the second floor. So we don't know if we need two floors of office at the bottom right-hand or one floor. It all depends on the upcoming months of working through the numbers and, and all those conversations to get the project very viable. But the way this is designed is the parking garage, uh, all the access and egress to go up and down if you're in an office or if you're in a residential is off that common parking garage. This is very typical of any downtown urban project you've seen. They all kind of work like that. One, it's very economical because that parking garage is precast. We're constructing in that manner. We're putting our elevators and stairwells and all that stuff in it, and so it keeps that cost out. We will have some outlier vertical, like at the bottom right-hand corner, you'll see a stair, you know, that allows that office to, to function the way it needs to. As we move up to the third floor, so at this level, you are all residential. So on the left, you can see where it says condos. You have 10 condos, and then it pulls to apartments. Uh, the conversation was there about shared amenities. So the amenities on this project is, is no different. It's, it's grilling stations, it's gaming rooms, it's, you know, it's all, everything a Class A project would have. Uh, we don't know yet if the condos and multifamily would share amenities. That was in previous conversations. So that's something that will come in the future as we continue down the path. Again, uh, this is the fourth floor, same as the third. The fifth floor, you have the condos and the apartments. The sixth floor, condos and apartments. Seventh floor, condos and apartments. So it keeps this all a wood structure. Five stories of wood on top of two floors of concrete. Um, we always, that, you ever heard the expression 5 under 2? That's a type 3 construction versus a type 5. It allows us to stay in a wood construction. It's more economical than an all-concrete structure. As I look at elevations, and I apologize that the street names are not names, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you what those are. Yes, so the top elevation is Lidle Street. Uh, these are not final elevations, so these are very similar to what was there before, but we'll be working on those. Top is Lidle, uh, the bottom is College Street. Everything you see in, like, the darker color, this is roughly mainly masonry with fiber cement, uh, being an accent. So that of a Class A office building and a lot of stone, um, on the project. The top is Spring Street and the bottom is Church Street. This shows the additional level of office. So, overall program, um, previous development agreement, we had 163 residential dwelling units. Uh, this would have 167. Uh, we had 28 four-cell residential dwelling units. The proposed is at 40. We had 40,000 square foot of office and retail. We're at 40,000 to 60,000 square foot of office or retail. Um, we're still renovating the existing church to accommodate a new use. Um, parking regulations before are the same as proposed. It's one space per one, two per two, one space per every 250 square foot of retail office or event venue. And then there was a shared parking reduction, much like most mixed-use projects. Typically, when you're living there versus working, people are not there when they're working. So it's a 25% reduction on the non-residential uses. And all the amenities, um, are the same, uh, from previous to proposed. Um, I guess some development details to mention. Uh, looking at a HUD 221D as the process for financing the majority of this project. Um, if you're not familiar with that, that is a, a federally backed loan. Um, it's a process. It takes a little bit longer, but it's, that's currently what we're seeing in this current market right now is the method for financing projects like this. Uh, they have hired, uh, Walker Dunlop, who is a third party, which does that process and walks them through it. Uh, also, um, we anticipate that we'll have to revise the HUD, revise the development agreement, TIF agreement, and go through that whole process to get this project where it needs to be, um, to make it financially, um, successful to, so we can move forward and, and not look at a parking lot anymore. So, that's really to sum up everything. And, and the point today was to, really to get your feedback as we move forward and, and how to move forward on the project.
When you say event menu, I mean, when you, when you, uh, what are you talking about? What size?
It could be in the church, but then, 53 under 13.
Yep.
The church can be an event center, a restaurant. It could be some other type of use, several of these.
I just know Murfreesboro, we need a...
There's not a, a good event menu. And, and I've expressed that to, um, to the development team. And I think the thought process was before is restore the exterior skin to where it needs to be, get the shell to where it needs to be, um, and, and basically go to the market and see who wants to be the tenant. And it may be, some people prefer, you know, a, a good steakhouse would be nice. But, you know, I think the event menu would be great. And it's...
Could possibly have a combo.
Yeah.
Now, your condo, uh, how many square feet are we talking about?
They're of all sizes, so they range, the one-bedrooms are anywhere between 750 to 850. The two-bedrooms are gonna be between 950 to 1,200. Uh, we didn't have any three-bedrooms. I think we had some studios in there for around 600 square feet. Um, and that's about the same size for the apartments. Um, so it's, it's gonna be a very, it's gonna be a market-rate apartment, I would say.
And what are you gonna think about for your rent?
That, we don't know yet. So we'll have to work that out. That's all gonna be based on what the construction cost is and then what the bank's gonna require because it's, it, it pays for itself. So it's, it's above my pay grade at the moment.
Then your overflow park, I know you designated one unit, one parking space. What about, let's say a unit has four. Where would be additional people going to the garage?
Correct. So we have perimeter parking, so the proposed development, you're roughly 600 parking spaces is what you have. But with mixed-use developments, and that's why we have a 20, we utilize the 25% parking reduction. So typically, in the morning, when, you know, or during the day, the multifamily's empty and the office is full. And typically, at night, the office is empty and the multifamily's full. So we, we typically find out projects like this, there's, they're overparked. Um, I don't know if you're familiar, downtown Nashville has a no-parking requirement, which doesn't make sense for multifamily, but makes sense for apartments because everybody's Ubering. Here, I don't see that happening, but I do see the fact that, uh, I highly doubt we're gonna have two cars at a one-bedroom here. But...
With the designated TIF, there's 150 additional public spaces inside the garage in addition to the requirements.
So the residential parking would not be separate from the...
There would be. The condo parking would be a level one. And then you'd have the public parking. Then as you go up and get to the residential parking, there'd be a separate gate to go through. Residential folks, we go through a gate with the following condo folks, we go through a gate, everything else is separate.
All parking is identified for the use.
And all this is to the public free parking, right?
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't call it free parking. It's public parking. If the parking garage does not make money, it does not sustain the project, so...
With our current agreements, parking would be charged.
Yes. So...
About an hour, just for a daily rate or...
Yes, there'd be something, we would know the details. One thing I've learned, I guess, just over time with these kind of deals is the parking garage is almost the most complex issue of the deal because you gotta take the parking spots and lease them to all the other stuff, because a project like this doesn't work in downtown Murfreesboro because there's nothing here to comp it to. So it's the TIF, the only way this works is if the TIF pays for the parking to make it pencil like a deal on Medical Center and Parkway, because if you want something like this downtown, if you already had it, then the bank would loan you what you need for it, and you could get, you know, the rents that would support it. Here, the bank's gonna say your rent rates, they're gonna comp you at a rent rate of something nearby that doesn't have it, and so you're basically getting comps to an inferior product, so then you're coming up with that additional equity in financing, which typically fills the deal because you're basically pioneering in an unproven market.
Mrs. Ellis-Harris, we're also, if you recall, on the Broad Street redevelopment, we are obligated to do a parking study on how our city hall parking deck is going to interact with parking structures there. I could see where that would encompass even if this is moving forward, how the structured parking and maybe even the circus parking around the square ultimately. We've talked about a parking authority, you know, managing all the parking downtown, but I think we would incorporate a lot of this into that study.
Not any developments down in Germantown, this rendering looks very familiar with...
Our offices, so as designers, architects we have, so our office is in downtown Nashville, and we've probably done 80 multifamily projects. Most of our stuff is West End, so if you see anything over five stories on West End from 2008 on, we've probably had a hand in it. My dad was, I'm a second generation, my dad, they called him the condo king at one time. He did condos all over the place, and that's something our office knows very well.
Yeah, you answered several of my questions about parking, public parking as well, but that was under the previous TIF arrangement that we had. Is that renegotiated, or where are we at with the TIF?
Those details, we don't know yet. We suspect there'll be some kind of negotiations there to get the project the most success moving forward.
I think it's gonna very much follow the template we just created with Broad Street redevelopment, where you basically have, again, three different potential financing, a venue, condos, and apartments, and if they're doing HUD for apartments and conventional for the condos and maybe even speculative conventional loan for the event space, those are all gonna have to enter into a parking agreement with each other on how, who's gonna, how the TIF is gonna be implemented and how that's going to go towards the, you know, who's gonna, the operation maintenance cost, the signage cost, the security cost, the warranty cost. So I think we're gonna have a good template to follow based on what we just went through with for Broad Street redevelopment.
Is there multiple entrances to the parking garage? I didn't see.
No, this one actually has one main entry.
And that's on...
Off of Lidle Street, and then it has one access for trash here, and so this is a very compact, one thing I will say, this is a hard project, complex project, dense project. Broad Street, from that standpoint, is easy on the engineering and architecture side.
The only comments that I've had from public, because some of these visuals have been made public, is it's fitting within the existing neighborhood architecture, and that we felt like the original design architecture was more compatible with the existing structures and the neighborhoods, looked better, but I don't know that, you know...
We feel like it does.
Okay.
Hard to get the condos off the top of the garage and down, and also raw, the levels of the exterior elevations that help cover up the necessary portion of the garage, so where you had garage were more extended above.
It's all behind.
We brought those two levels up, and what we're doing, and for the most part, covering the garage, pretty much, and then the portion that's on Spring Street behind the apartments, it's further down. It's also, if we're going by precast, we'll have wall panels that open these, and so it's, to us, it does feel, has a better feel to it.
I know this is kind of in the weeds, but just a question that you probably need to answer, how do you manage this property?
It'll be managed by one entity, like a great star that comes in and they manage the office, the retail, and the residential component, and there's actually amenity, there's about 5,000 square feet.
There's also an amenity that we hadn't mentioned. Go to the next one. You'll see in the purple there, the little L-shaped area, right below your cursor, to the right. That is set aside for police precinct, small police precinct that we would allow there. At the time this was originally going through, you were looking at walking police patrols and also sign a few police patrol cars to do their paperwork there, so you have more police cars circulating the downtown area, and there would be a couple of designated police parking spaces right outside.
Asking for a parking.
And on the elevation, so what you're seeing today is not what it'll, it's close, but we got a lot of work to do to get there. I think really what you're seeing today is to give an idea of how the massing has changed, so, you know, the big, the big change is, if you remember this, if I was to go here, this was another four or five stories up, and really you were seeing that exposed structure, parking structure from all areas, which then you cladded that with brick and made it look like windows and all that kind of stuff, which typically when you do a wrap, the reason you do a wrap-type product is you're hiding the parking structure and you're not putting an expensive skin on it, because the multifamily, the office, and the retail is the skin. So, you know, I agree with some of the, like, this to me does not seem like the right approach for how that skin should look like on the ground. I think, I think this feels a little better, but we'll get there and we'll work with staff to get it to a level to where we think be presentable for you guys.
There's been a lot of, of course, comments on this project over the last 10 years, but the one, the one question that we've gotten a lot, and I was glad to hear this, can you sort of update us on the inspections that y'all do on a monthly basis and also your yearly inspection your engineer has to do on the church? Because that was a lot, that was a lot of the feedback we got on what state is the church in.
So everyone would understand, we as a development and design building entity, we are architects in this case, Mark is specialty of what we're doing, but we are architects, we're engineers, civil, structural, mechanical, plumbing, electrical, so within our organization, we are engineers, I'm a structural engineer, so we look at things that way. In addition to that, we typically, on roughly a monthly basis, I check the property, some of my super tenants check the property on a retail basis. Every year, when we renew our insurance, and insuring a vacant structure is not as easy as one thing, of course, so we're quick through our paces. Every year with that renewal, our insurance company sends out a private inspector, an independent inspector, to do an inspection on the church, and if they find anything that's of any significance, they put it on a list, and we don't get insured until we've checked it off. Most of the time, you know, things have come up, we have a lot of fire extinguishers in there. Most of the time, it's something where a tag on the extinguisher is over a year old, so we swap them out, that kind of thing, we try to catch up at the end of time. There's not been anything done inside the church other than taking down some of the stuff that was in the fire area. That's been taken down. We cleaned up, taken out all the carpet, that part's empty, we cleaned up those kind of things, but there's routine inspections, as far as formal inspection, declaring everything done, that's done about once a year. If you look at the church now and walk around that, that church was built in 1888, and it's got the large stone foundation area. There's no cracking in that foundation. There's actually very minimal cracks in anything. A little small crack in it, addition, it was built in 75 just because it wasn't driven correctly, and that's been taken care of. So it's, we're also going essentially drawing the entire exterior to be able to get closer looking at everything. The roof does not leak. It was replaced previously, so we're, right now, we feel good about the structure. It's not been just said. We've done some things to also encapsulate some areas to make sure we don't have any kind of animals getting in below, that kind of thing. So we have given it some attention, it does get regularly looked at. We're around every few weeks, at least a month, to check things out. I think our largest issue on the project has been just the effect of wind on the wind barrier and the fence, and, you know, there's not much you can do about that other than fixing it when it occurs. The church itself is in good shape.
So we got about four minutes left. I would be curious if anybody here, council or commission, I mean, has anyone seen that you don't want this to move forward based upon what you see, or you're okay with it? I mean, that's why we're here, is they're looking for feedback.
I'm okay, I just ask, as you deal with your garage, you have a lot of handicap. A lot of instances on that.
Yes, ma'am.
I guess I would ask if anybody has any negative comments, and if there's not, then we'll move on. All right, we'll move on. Thank y'all.
Thank you very much.
All right, the next item on our agenda is design of Rutledge Way extension.
Appreciate it. Thanks a lot. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chairman. We appreciate the opportunity to bring this forward to the planning commission and the city council tonight. I'll just go over a couple of slides and then yield the rest of my time to my friend, Mr. Warren, and let him present his information to you. I know the council has seen this a couple of times, but we'll, of course, this project is the Rutherford Boulevard extension, Rutledge Way connection. It is identified in the 2040 major thoroughfare plan, mainly as a project that overcomes one of our natural barriers, which is I-24. This is the project as it's currently designed. You see Rutherford Boulevard extending with a bridge over I-24 and connecting over to Warrior Drive. This is the part that's in question here. This is the extension of Rutledge Way. If you'll remember, Rutledge Way keeps on going out to Mill Tennessee Boulevard there to the north, but it'll connect through the, through the pond here and actually form an intersection at this, at this location. We do have, just for your information, we do have a waste management site that's coming on board here in the near future. One of the questions that Mr. Smythe and his team has brought up is the connection, as you can see here, of this industrial area over to commercial area, and then it's actually Riverdale High School here to the, to the south, and the introduction of truck traffic this way. Just some benefits, it's gonna relieve some traffic and help with regional growth, some of the risks I mentioned, introducing some of the truck traffic, and then some business accessibility. This is an alternate project that we, we came up with. This would be, we've already got the mitigation for going through this pond, so we'd wanna go ahead and take advantage of that, so we'd place field through here just in case we ever want to do the project in the future, but we would only go down, about halfway down Mr. Smythe's property and build a cul-de-sac here. Just for information purposes, main drainage area through here, we got a fairly large culvert going through this, right in this area, that crosses over, or crosses under the interstate and goes on over to the Stone's River. This is just a exploded view, if you will, of the area. This is Mr. Smythe's property, this is the connection. Just, we see most of the traffic coming out of here, either going, you know, doing the right, right, and then right, and then getting on the interstate. Any industrial traffic, we believe, is gonna want to get to the interstate as quickly as possible. That's 1.4 miles. Rutherford to church is 1.1 miles, and the way they're currently going is one and a half miles left, or out to Mill Tennessee Boulevard left, left on New Salem. With that, I'll be happy to turn it over to Mr. Warren.
Appreciate the answer, if you don't mind.
I'll pull, yeah.
If you got a presentation or you gonna pull? Just, let's just use this one.
This one, okay.
Yeah. The pressure to talk fast, I just don't think I've got the capacity for it, so I pared down a, an attachment that I emailed to most everybody in the room, and so it's a lot to digest. Before I got too far into this, I don't think I need to introduce Mr. Jim Smythe to you, because I'm sure everybody here already knows him. Jill is his daughter and a lot of help to him. And Mr. Smythe initially asked me to take a look at the rubber geometry right in front of this property, which now I've got time to try and get a, the bridge, out of necessity because it has to be clear, at least 13 feet above the pavement, the I-24 is already higher than this wet one in here. Did I do that?
I think you did, but I'll get you back.
I'll stand away.
Where else can I get you back?
There we go. But I can't explain this part without the picture. There we go. Bridge, the bottom part of the bridge has to be 16 feet above the pavement. The pavement of I-24 is already higher than the wet one. And then it's a steel girder bridge, which the steel girder is gonna be five feet tall, and then the concrete deck is another two or three feet, makes it about 23 feet higher than the pavement, which is still yet higher than the, than the wet ones, which means that there is a long gentle slope to the approaches on the bridge because of the elevation required to take the bridge across right there. But I'm not really gonna talk to you about the problems that it causes for his project because we think there are other problems that need to be considered here, and it's something that comes up a lot when we're designing things, and it's in my treatise and I think I characterized it as an unintended consequence, and basically, we think it's a mistake to extend Rutherford Boulevard all the way out here, and here's why. The zoning map, which you may remember, but everything up here is industrially, lighter heavy, and then if you look at Warrior Way down through here, Riverdale High School is massive. Couldn't tell you how many thousands of students and teachers are there in a day, but most of all the traffic getting on here is gonna be of a residential sort. School traffic, a lot of residential sort. We're about to add significant development here, the waste management, I know that they show, I think, 67 parking spaces for their garbage trucks. Don't mean any disrespect, they're not even one else to call. And we can expect them to be making several trips in and out, and I just think that it is a bad idea to put them there where a significant part of them would be going this direction and turning either left or right, integrated into all of the traffic that is going up and down Warrior Drive already. Mill Tennessee Boulevard is surrounded with the commercial properties, we've got Parks, Park Avenue up here, all of this down here, all of this up here, and that's where the truck traffic, out of necessity, has to go there, and I think that's where we need to keep it, as opposed to putting it out here on Warrior Drive. And Chris showed you, if we can go back to the one that we called Saigon Rutledge, this proposition, which doesn't negate the ability later on to connect to Rutherford Boulevard if it proves to make sense later, and so, but it doesn't really change anything about the traffic that is on Rutledge, except for the 67 trucks that would be here. They'll integrate into the major truck thoroughfare that is Mill Tennessee Boulevard up there, which connects to 231 to the east and connects to Highway 99 to the west. Is there a mile extra distance covered there for them? Maybe. Mill Tennessee Boulevard is surrounded with the commercial properties, we've got Parks, Park Avenue up here, all of this down here, all of this up here. And that's where the truck traffic out of necessity has to go there, and I think that's where we need to keep it, as opposed to putting it out here on Warrior Drive. And Chris showed you, if we can go back to the one that we called Sacco on Rutledge, this proposition, which doesn't negate the ability later on to connect to Rutherford Boulevard if it proves to make sense later. And so, but it doesn't really change anything about the traffic that is on Rutherford, except for the 67 trucks that would be here. They'll integrate into the nature truck thoroughfare that is Mill Tennessee Boulevard up there, which connects to 231 to the east and connects to Highway 99 to the west. Is there a mile extra distance covered there for them? Maybe. Is that a reasonable thing to expect them to do as opposed to trying to integrate with residential traffic over on Warrior Drive? I believe it is. Now, if I've got any time left, Ken.
You got four minutes.
Wow.
Your previous applicants gave you a little time, so.
No, I'm not giving them that. All right, so on the traffic planning report, which I got after we met, Mr. Smythe and I met with engineering and planning, David Eyes with legal was there, and we were talking about this kind of an idea, not taking it all the way through. But there's other benefits to not taking it all the way through. This blue line roughly outlines an area that has been defined by someone of us as a wetland, but I happen to agree with them. Evidence of that, I'm not, don't have the credentials, I've got the knowledge, I think, to recognize the etliche flora and fauna that are native to wetlands. But what makes it abundant, the evidence, is that this, this big hole out here, the surface of the water there is a, an absolute indication of the elevation or saturation zone. In other words, the soils are saturated to the same elevation as the surface of the water there. Chris is nodding his head, I assume that means he agrees with me. But the other evidence, raw fish holes, we observed cranes out there in the water fishing. Wouldn't have known that there were fish out there, I don't fish personally, but cranes did. So it tells us that there is aquatic wildlife in there as well as aquatic plants. Now, as an engineer working with private developers, trying to put this kind of project on a wetland is an enormous headache and not likely to get blessed. But here, we're proposing not only obliterate, but obliterate, basically. Mess with it, I can't help it. So.
One minute, Bob.
One minute?
Yeah.
Lost my momentum. And so, I guess I'm close to wrapping up with that basic points, the very high points of the things that I sent out to you. And you got questions for me, I'll be right back.
So Eddie, what's, what's the feel of staff on this proposal that we're seeing right here?
As I told the council previously, we like moving traffic, so we like the connection. It shows about 6,000 cars that we'll be able to divert by 2040 if we make the connection from Rutledge. I didn't really tell a word we'll take that from, but some from Mill Tennessee Boulevard and some from, from Church Street. And just, you know, just to give folks another route, we also, as a, I think it's a midterm or a mid-level improvement is to improve Old Salem Highway all the way into downtown. So that's kind of a natural progression to go Rutledge to, to Old Salem. It really is another route to downtown eventually. So that's, that's our thinking, but we understand the concerns and understand, you know, some, brought up some legitimate things to look at. Mr. Smythe and Mr. Warren's both smart men, so that's why we wanted to bring before the council on the planning commission.
I think you talked about it at one of workshops, but is there any way to restrict truck traffic on residential roads?
We've looked at that, looked at the possibility of even, either putting an axle designation, kind of like what we've done on Haynes Drive, to limit the number of axles that can, that can be on that section. We, we looked at something as simple as right here, make, just having a sign saying truck route to the, to the right as you're coming there. That's something we're, we're working with the transportation department to see what, you know, MUTCD would, would suggest for us there. But to answer your question, yes, I, we think that there's signage that we could do to encourage, encourage those routes.
I would hope the signs work better than the ones getting off at Church Street that said trucks to go to Pilot being this far lane. That one doesn't work.
No, I can't, that's a, that's a fair point, Mr. Ryan.
I don't want to disagree with you. Bob's way more of an engineer than I am, but we deal with wetlands mitigation all the time. I mean Cherry Lane, with what we're having to do with Cherry Lane, we've had to route, we don't just go blow through there and kill all the wildlife. I mean, there's, there's a process that we have to go through, so I appreciate Bob's comments, but to act like that we don't deal with wetlands all the time on just about every single city project, we do, correct?
Yes, we actually went through about a six-month process to, went, negotiated with the Corps of Engineers, and this project's actually fully, we purchased, I forget how much we spent, but we, we've purchased mitigation credits, and they'll actually save wetlands in another location.
Okay.
Which would be, you know, they're more, they're more connected wetlands as opposed to these inner, you know, these parchments.
And I know Bob did mean it this way, but we're not doing anything illegal to go blowing through something to build a road. There's a process we have to go through, not only with T-DAC, but with the Corps of Engineers, and I mean, it's.
Yeah, it's the hardest part of the project now, honestly, is to get mitigation, get approved.
Have we got the price of say, you know, we could do the cul-de-sac and the partial thing and say at some point in time it's feasible to connect it and do it, do what we're talking about? What's the, what are we saving? I mean, other than time, I guess, and, you know, the cost of things as they go along, but, I mean, if you piecemeal something like this, it seems like to see what effect you're going to have, are you getting enough traffic off Church Street, you know, to make it reasonable? And we're taking advantage of our road over the interstate, you know, and excluding exclusively residential Brock traffic, because I don't think truck traffic's going to come down to Church Street, you know, to get away, so, I don't know, maybe it's something to consider. Is there, if the price is not significantly more, is it significantly more?
Yeah, it's about 1.3 millions, what we had estimated that we would save this, but of course, you know, Councilman, you know, you've been doing this as long as I have, that it's never going to be cheaper than that.
So the reason, I know we wanted to make sure that we could hear from Bob and Mr. Smythe, so that's why that we got, the planning commission's not really going to hear this, so it's, it's on the council agenda for tomorrow night, but because we're not having a public hearing, we wanted to make sure to hear from Bob and, you know, Mr. Smythe for a long time. Here's the only thing I'll say, and we say this and the planning commission says this routinely, there's a reason why that there are stub streets on roads. And at some point, those roads have the possibility that they're going to be extended. And so, and the reason why, and this is the part that stinks, is the conversations we're having right now when it does come time for those roads to be extended. And that's the, that's the part that really sucks for the property owner, it's tough for the elected official, it's tough for the planning commission, because these are the unintended consequences, as Bob says, that we have to discuss, so. But I know it's coming to council tomorrow night, correct?
Correct.
So Bob, you had, you got a few?
Just a minute or two, I want to respond to it. I appreciate your comments, at least not accusing you of blaming y'all for killing cranes and fish. But I didn't know all that you put into this with working with the Corps of Engineers, and that's the way you have to do it. But as far as the traffic goes, the, the question isn't so much about traffic counts, how many of this kind or that kind, it's blending. I know that along Warrior Drive, there are trucks, some of them are tractor-traggers, not the majority of them. We'll see a lot of delivery vans, UPS, Amazon shoot up and down my road, we get an Amazon truck about once an hour. You know, and that's the sort of thing that is going on, and those trucks are sized and designed for negotiating that kind of traffic. The reason for what I had to say about putting this kind of traffic onto Warrior Drive is mixing the kinds, the 53-foot tractor, tractors full of tractors, the now garbage truck not to be making the pejorative out of it, but it's just a type of truck that doesn't move through traffic quite as well as my pickup truck does or smaller vehicle. And I don't think that's a mix that is desirable when you've got other options. And I don't think by not doing it right now, we're really creating an issue for anybody or anything. You still have Rutherford Boulevard coming through there, which gives traffic on 231 that option. Started going from Salem Road over to 231, if some reason you find that they're going to be on 231, it would be more, it would make more sense to me as a native here to turn on Warrior Drive than to jump on 24 and run down to 231. So the adverse effects that you might imagine, I think are going to be a lot less than the adverse effects that I think would happen by putting those trucks on there. And by doing what we were showing a minute ago, going in and putting the fill in, you don't even have to put the fill in right now, but it does make sense if you're going to mobilize to have that equipment there and make it do that, if you got to work throughout with the Corps. But by deferring building that section until we see it's absolutely justified and useful, and we see how this performs without it, and by the way, a lot of what I'm saying here is looking at the level of service ratings on the intersection right here as it's projected. And I don't know if that, since that traffic planning report created 2021, which pretty sure predates waste management.
It does.
So it just leaves me with doubts about whether our traffic counts in that traffic planning report have that built into it.
I, I know that the, Matthew and Ben, you may have spoke with it, but it's my understanding of, Mr. Warren brings up an excellent point about the waste away of the number of trucks, but as I recall, that, those trucks are all like early morning, like two, three, four o'clock in the morning type?
Yes, from the meetings that we've had with them, their goal is to miss the peak traffic. They want to get up early in the morning and get back before the peak traffic hits in the afternoon.
Got you. Which is kind of the way our guys like to do it. I know at six o'clock, the block is usually empty, so.
Guys, we're running out of time, we got a planning commission meeting in five minutes, so I don't know if you have any feedback for the Smythe side. It sounds like y'all are going to be looking at this tomorrow night, but we're going to need to adjourn.